Good evening and welcome to our regular council meeting for June twenty, June the seventeenth, isn't it?
Nineteen.
June the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And at this time, we're going to ask our councilman White to give us the indication.
I have a problem with this. Thank you for allowing us to be together at this time. Right now, we ask that you would just guide us during this county meeting. We ask that you would just give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding as we address all of the matters relating to Allendale County. Right now, we just ask continued blessings for all of our citizens, all of its leaders. These blessings and all of us. We ask Saint Jesus' question first, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. White. We're down to item number three, Declaration of Coram. Without a doubt, we do have a coram here, so. Item number four, approval of the agenda.
Moving second.
Moving properly second. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses by the same side. Item five, approval of minutes. And we have two here, our minutes, regular council meeting, or public hearing and regular council meeting, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and a special meeting, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
So moving both minutes.
Sir. Moving properly second, for approval on our minutes for May fifteenth and May twenty-ninth. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses, ayes aye. Again, welcome to our regular council meeting here on June twentieth.
Nineteen.
Nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you so much, Stuart. We're down to public, coming up. I know we had Mr. Pinkley's. We're going to ask Chief James.
I remember Mr. Pinkley being one of them.
Yes, sir.
To our chairman and councilmen and to all the staff, good evening.
Good evening.
I think I had three or four items on that, Mr. Robertson.
Yes, I can't really make out of them. Maybe roads, pots, and water tank.
That's right.
Okay.
That's what it is.
You get a better job this time.
There it is, yeah. The roads, as everybody know, the rain was coming in on us and we fighting to try to get out of home. But at the same time, I'm on my foot, but it's no good. And we got two people working road and bridge. Something wrong with that, which y'all need to look at. The park, the James think the park, the two playground areas at the park, the moats were put in there eight years ago. That moat has done got deteriorated and bad, need to come out. It's my understanding that as a proposal came to you all in April twenty-four, about between seven and eight thousand dollars to put the moat in. And at the time, we didn't have the funds, but we need to find the funds. I was here about three or four months ago and you all approved about fifty million, fifty thousand dollars to renovate a historical building or something. So I believe if you can find fifty thousand for a historical bill, y'all must be able to find eight thousand for the children.
Yes, sir.
Help me out on that. The other thing that I want to bring to y'all attention, some of you may not know, you have a water tank down there.
Yes, sir.
That gives good water to the prison. Prison pays good money for that water.
Yes.
The anniversary should be getting ready to come up for that tank to be cleaned.
Yes.
And I hope you all have it in the budget. So it normally run between forty and fifty thousand dollars. So we need to find that money, make sure that we get that tank clean with the time to get that tank clean. Okay? That was the most of the stuff that I want to talk about. The other thing is that, Mr. Robertson, let's keep in mind that some things in Allendale don't work like Greenwood and Greenville and Charleston. Some things in Allendale is hands-on because we so small and we have so much need. So you have to have boots on the ground. If the boots isn't on the ground, the work won't get done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pinkley, while you're up.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Pinkley?
No, sir.
You know, we talked, I think the first presentation you did a couple of months ago, that there's a possibility we could use some funding that you may have available to purchase, maybe jointly somewhere equipment?
Well, it's, it's, you can rent equipment.
Okay.
You can rent equipment.
Jointly?
But you have to specify the job that you're going to do with that equipment. It can't be nothing else done with it other than what you specified to do with it.
And we can use some of your fund for that.
Yeah. But we already allocated you ninety thousand dollars for rock. Now that rock, just over mean crushing run, it could be, the big rocks too. As long as you putting them on the road, they'll stop the erosion of the road.
If I.
It can do this round.
Okay. If our grater is in for repair for two weeks, we can partner with you to rent a grater?
Yes, but I would love for you to use that hundred eighty-five thousand dollars first. That hundred eighty-five thousand dollars that the taxpayers already give you, I would love for you to use it. And then when it run out, you come to me and I'm going to help you out.
Okay.
How about that?
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Next, we have Ms. Tony Major.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening. I appreciate it. I did pass out some documents before the meeting started, and I'll discuss those in a few minutes. The issue I'd like to address is the lack of transparency of the county finances. In 2023, we received one point five million dollar tan loans. Starting in January twenty-four, we received a three point five million dollars from West Fraser and a one point five million dollar tan loan, eight hundred thousand dollars from the state, property tax money, other fee in lieu of monies, and other sources such as permits, road fees, ticket money, and others. To date, there has not been an official accounting of one cent of that money. Two council members were present several years ago when I asked that the county finances be put online so that the taxpaying citizens could see what is being done with tax dollars. To date, that hasn't been accomplished. Further, not even a paper document has been made available to the public. The documents I gave you are from Richland County, Dorchester County, and Hampton Counties. They show by month every penny that was spent in their counties. Y'all know the situation in Hampton. If they can do it, there isn't any reason why we can't. There are probably more online, but that was all the time I had to research, and I didn't print the whole things because Richland was like forever. I'm asking that the county provide the taxpayers with a full accounting of where every penny has gone, starting on January first, twenty twenty-four through current. I'm sure that the taxpayers would like to know what has happened to the millions of dollars that has been spent. I would like to think council would like to know also. If this can't be put online right now, I'm asking that a full accounting be printed and placed on the table by the sign-in sheets at all county council meetings. It's time that public information be available to the public in whatever form is possible. If council believes it isn't possible, please explain why not and when that information will be available. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can say that is possible, and we're working. We're by new administrator. We've talked with Clay about some data entry initiative that we're going to begin very soon. And I don't see why we can't go by, in fact, we're in that audit period now, so we should be able to have those documents.
I mean, even most of these are check registers to show what was spent, you know, so that can't be too hard, I wouldn't think.
No, it's not. It's, but I think we're getting things in place to be able to do it by the press of a button.
So by next month?
I would say, I would say.
Come on, buddy.
I would have. I would have.
Push the button. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is what Janky sent me.
Excuse me.
Where's that from?
Okay. Lastly, we have Seena Lloyd. How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
I have handouts.
Okay.
Let me pass them around.
Thank you.
Seena Lloyd from Allendale Hampton Jasper County Library, and I come to you, you know, we, we have had a couple of different issues at the library, but we've worked with our assistant administrator and most recently our admin, our new interim administrator to work through those. So we're, we're happy with the communication and the conversations going on there, so happy about that.
Good.
But what I have for you here is a handout. Take a couple, community, take a couple, for activities this summer. So we have our summer reading program. It's for all ages, so please participate. You are all reading now up at the desk. That time counts. We want to see that time recorded in our system. It is online, so you can record it online, see, see the minutes that our community is contributing to our, our goal of educational excellence. And we do have prizes for what you have read. And so you can come into the library, get your little goodie bag, and then get some different prizes for our adults if you complete our summer reading program. It's just six hours of reading over the summer, and you can get a tote bag at the end of that summer reading program and a shirt. So we encourage that. And kids get lots of different little chachkeys and the same things at the, at the end there.
Six hours, that's from your library or I couldn't do it from my library?
You can do it from your library. You can do it reading all of the backup documentation that you need to read for your county council meetings as well. It doesn't have to be from a specific library, but if you do want to sign up, there's a QR code here that you can scan your smartphone to sign up, or you can go online on our website and sign up on a computer as well. So we hope that you visit the library. We've had on, on yesterday, we had both our pop-up farmer's market and a plant the rainbow program. Both of those were very well attended, and we had over a hundred people in the library just yesterday.
Great.
So, any questions?
I noticed there's been a lot of activities, folks standing out during different period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Are there some classes going on or what's going on over there?
Yeah, so Denmark Tech also does have some classes that are happening as well. But like yesterday, we had our pop-up farmer's market, and so we had the tents there, and so it's, there's some nutrition education going on as well as the ability for individuals to come in and use their senior vouchers and their SNAP vouchers to get food.
Oh, okay. Good. Any questions? It's a lot to appreciate.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay. Okay, we're down to a visitor, and we have Ms. Megan Daddoff. Is that correct?
You're very close.
Pretty close.
All right. I promise to be quick. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Megan Daddoff, and I am the Director of State Government Relations for Spectrum by Charter Communications. And my entire role at the company centers around being a resource for local governments and their staff. I am your liaison with the company, so I'm extra excited to be here and introduce myself to all of you. Charter Communications is a leading broadband connectivity company and cable operator, providing high-speed internet, video, mobile, and voice services to more than thirty-one million customers across forty-one states. In South Carolina alone, we serve over nine hundred and eighty thousand customers across two hundred and twenty-eight of the two hundred and twenty, or two hundred and seventy communities, and we're continuing to grow. And just here in South Carolina, we also have over three thousand employees working in the state. Over the last several years, we've been working closely with federal, state, and local governments to expand broadband infrastructure to unserved and underserved communities. And when we began this work, we weren't just focused on building fiber and connecting homes. We really wanted to focus on the bigger goal, which is making sure that everybody has the tools, the access, and the knowledge they need to participate in today's digital world safely. And that includes students, seniors, job seekers, and small businesses. So as part of our grant agreement with the South Carolina Broadband Office, we committed to making a forty-five thousand dollar donation to a, to support a local digital literacy efforts here in Allendale and Barnwell County. Barnwell has approved our nonprofit partner that we recommended, and tonight, I'm here to ask for your approval of our partner here in Allendale. And so we are recommending the Southern Palmetto Foundation as the recipient of that forty-five thousand dollar investment. They have been doing this work from the very beginning. The Southern Palmetto Foundation has served as active members of the State Broadband Advisory Council, helping to guide strategy and lift rural voices, especially those of Allendale and Barnwell County where their work centers. They've consistently shown a deep understanding of the challenges rural families face, not just in accessing broadband, but in being able to use it confidently and safely. They are here with me today, and I'm sure they would be glad to talk in more detail about their program, should you have any questions. But they are exactly the kind of group to help make the most of this infrastructure investment. So at Charter, we live where we work, and it's important to us to be good members of the community. And so this donation can't move forward without your approval. So that's what I'm here to ask for today. I thank you for your time. As I said, Mr. Bob Sneed is here with the Southern Palmetto Foundation if you have any further questions.
Any question, council? My question would be, Bob, to his staff.
We'll both come up. We got myself in the territory to answer questions.
Yes.
We also got some, we got some handouts actually to give.
Okay.
Very good. Yep.
Give me that to ask.
Exactly. My question would be.
So they're following that.
What are you doing here in Allendale?
Yes.
And I'm sure you're doing something, but I, I think council needs to be aware of it.
Yes, sir.
And I think we want to deny.
Yeah.
Any, any advancement for what you're doing.
Yeah.
And I assume the Palmetto Foundation is a spin-off from the Chamber?
Yes, yeah. So that's our, it's our five oh one C three outreach entity. So we have the Chamber that's member-driven, and then the, the, the foundation that does all of our outreach work. Right now, currently, actually, we are in week eight.
Propel?
So we, we do our Propel Business Lab program, which is a twelve-week business development course going through financial planning, marketing, and, and, and digital access for those businesses. So they create a website and develop all of the stuff for, for digital marketing. We're currently at USC Saukahatchee for the Allendale cohort. And then we'll be doing our pitch competition, which you are all invited to, July tenth at the Carolina Theater here in Allendale. So we have a good crop of four businesses that are gung-ho, and we're going to give away ten thousand dollars as part of that group.
Yes.
So we do that every year as a part of our outreach with the, the program. What I gave y'all there is actually another initiative that we do that's really focused on digital literacy. It's our Coding Career Connect program, and it's, it's all focused on software development skills. This particular cohort's going to be a six-week course this summer focused on WordPress design, and a part of that, they will actually have paid work developing a website that'll be out there in the worlds that will pay them to, to do that work, every participant in that program. And, and that program, last year, we had a couple of Allendale participants as a part of that program, and the graduation was at USC Saukahatchee, our state of the region event there, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're doing a lot.
Yeah. We're, we're trying. We're trying.
And I might add, if it's, if anybody here, council, whatever, if there's any way that we can be more visible and all, then please reach out and let us know. That is definitely our goal. It's kind of challenging sometimes, but I mean, we, if there's any, anything, anything at all, please, please let us know.
Okay. Well, thank you, and apologize for not being there last.
Always fine.
We understand you came and represented well.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I thought nothing else, just to ask for your approval of the Southern Palmetto Foundation.
Okay. And I think council may be ready to give us a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation.
Second. So moving properly second, that we accept the recommendation of the donation forty-five thousand dollars that will serve the Allendale, Barnwell community, and all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Ayes aye. Thank you so very much.
I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Old business, and I've had a chance to, had a sidebar conversation with, with council. That's the only? All right. I have trouble keeping up with all the paperwork here. Okay. I was looking at the one that came with the package, but it's been changed, so we're down to camp for the three hole. So this time, we're asked, I've asked Chair, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to have one report, and that is from the Office on Aging. They had been over a couple of things at their meeting. The first one is the Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Program. The first distribution was, for the vouchers, was last Friday, which was June the thirteenth. And so far, they had three hundred and eighty-five eligible seniors to receive a fifty-dollar voucher to be used starting tomorrow at the local farmer market. Secondly, it's the School of Transportation Service transition. Effective July one of this year, the Office on Aging School of Transportation Service will no longer operate as a five-three-one-one sub-recipient under Palmetto Breeze. Palmetto Breeze and the Lord Savannah Council of Governments have expressed a willingness to help the Office on Aging with this transition. As the budget process moves forward, they're asking county council to determine how to reallocate the funds provided to Palmetto Breeze to help support the Office of Aging five-three-one-one school service. And lastly, is the Legion Center Walking Trail Project. Project progress continue on the Walking Trail Project. The environmental scientists have marked the wetland areas, and the surveyors have begun their work, their field work. That's my report from the Officer Aging meeting.
Okay. Any idea from the Office of Aging Committee on how we're going to reallocate that money?
They need enough to council to determine how to do that.
All right. But no recommendation coming?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. I think that's an additional twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand that's coming by?
I think, is that right?
Twenty, twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand? Okay. All right. Mr. Governor?
I don't have much. Got some reports from the Public Safety Committee. Fire Department had thirty-two calls this month. EMS had a hundred and forty-eight calls. Eighty-eight of those went to Allendale County Hospital. From the Sheriff's Department, they had a total of six hundred and fifty-nine calls into nine-one-one. Of those, six fifty-nine, hundred and six were county calls, three hundred and eighty-seven were city calls. Three-hundred-and-eighty-seven were city calls. Had a hundred-and-sixteen traffic stops, a hundred-and-twenty-two traffic tickets issued, nineteen arrests, seven littering cases. Animal shelter had sixteen calls. Fourteen dogs captured, seven sent to rescue, and thirty dogs are currently at the shelter. It's a total of a hundred calls handled by phone and other escorts and civil matters. And there was also six tons of shingles and building debris dumped on our chroma property. Illegal dumper was apprehended and paid five-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-three dollars in fines. The debris came from Nashville, Tennessee. The company came and cleaned up materials and took all their trash to the landfill. So, good job for Sheriff Freeman and his staff for handling all this. We're still currently negotiating with the town. Sheriff is covering calls in the town of Allendale. I hope we're really close to finishing up our latest MOU. So hopefully, we'll be having some more coverage for the town in the near future. And on economic development, Chairman and myself met with SCA on a new project on June the fourth at Go Vans for a dinner. It's a very promising project. We're excited about it. And just wanted to publicly thank the Go Van family for opening up on us, opening up for us on Wednesday, which are not, not normally open. So just want to give them a shout-out for, for hosting us. And look forward to this new project. Hopefully, it's internalized. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Ms. Jennings?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Recently, at our last Lord Council of Government meeting that was held in Aiken, I was elected as the Chairman of the Lord Council of Government for the six counties in our district. So I will be providing Allenhead County with everything you need to know to help our county be successful. Right now, for our Office of Aging, for more to care, we averages from eight thousand to sixteen thousand dollars a month to carry our seniors to their doctor visits. The Lord Council meal program, right now, is running from five-thousand-eight-hundred dollars to eight thousand dollars a month. But it's going to be reduced because of the American Rescue Plan. You know, we're going to lose some money. But we may lose a whole lot more money, because right now, we don't even know we're going to survive because of the federal cuts. Federal cuts. We don't know what's going to happen. And that, it doesn't just only include Allendale, includes all six counties. It'll be a while before we know. So right now, you know, we're pinching pennies, you know, trying to make things work. So that's the report on the, the Lord Council of Government. But then I have a serious concern that last year, the county received an air, an airmark of one-point-two-million dollars to build a fire station in Set Mark. That has not been done yet. And according to our treasurer, according to our treasurer, we only have in, out of that's one-point-two-million dollars, we only have six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars. That's all we have. Now, here is the problem. The county agreed, including myself, including myself, that we were going to purchase two fire trucks, and which the two fire trucks was not a part of that agreement. I spoke to Mr. Killian earlier, and he informed us along with Mr. Chairman that if it's whatever we are using money for, if it's not used for that purpose that we got money for, we might be in trouble. You know? I don't know about all of that, but right now, if we have one fire truck, but if we purchase another fire truck, we want to have the two-hundred-thousand dollars left. And we don't have a fire station in Set Mark. So I'd like the county council, county, to seriously look at this, because the money is for a fire station to be built in Set Mark. And we don't have that yet. Mr. Killian, would you?
You just made me aware of, of a day or two ago, I did not have a chance to do it. I certainly would. That's not good with all the other funding.
Okay, because, um, thank you, sir.
Ms. Jennings, I think Public Safety Committee, I think allocation of funding from that, that part of money, it came back to Council. I don't think anybody just spent money. So I would ask that you get with our Public Safety Committee, and I think they can better tell you how the money that was approved by Council, how it was spent, and then we can, we can sit down with Clay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have requested that several times with our previous interim administrator, because whenever the law wants to know how that money is spent, they contact me, because I'm going to ask for the money. So they, and I don't know. I, I mean, I know about the fire truck. I don't know, but I have requested that information. But anyway, I am requesting it now from Mr. Killian.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Um, my next report, and it's really not a report, but, um, I am a citizen of Allenhead County. I live in the town of Allenhead. I live right next door to the C.B. Bank School. Okay? It was recently discovered that in that C.B. Bank School, there was asbestos in that school. Well, I don't know a lot about asbestos, but I know I live next to the school where the asbestos is located. And I have been doing some inquiries about asbestos, where I was assured that I was not in any danger, or the citizens in my community, the students in my community, or whatever, that I was assured today that we were not in any danger with the asbestos being in the school. But I'm still concerned about it, so I went a little further. And I made a call to Senator Brett Hutto and explained the situation. And he informed me today, although, that the airmarks are frozen for this year in the state of South Carolina, that he is going to try and find some funds to help remove that asbestos out of school. Because, you know, um, I don't want to blame my cough on asbestos, but I've been coughing.
I think, I think you can ignore it.
I don't want to blame it. I've been coughing. But anyway, you know, I, I, because I live in that community, I'm concerned, and I'm sure the other members, citizens are too, that live. But now, there's no wall to stop if asbestos is leaking out, to stop it from going all over this town.
Asbestos is a word.
Well, I'm just going to tell it. But anyway, but anyway, Senator Hutto said he's going to try and make an attempt to find some funds to help with that situation with asbestos in the school. Because eventually, the school will fall down if you don't know, do anything with it. And it's going to escape anyway, because it's been there a hundred years. So you're going to have to do something with the school, with that building.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a question? Was, was there any mention of that, you know, with the actual C.B. Bank project and all of you? You know, when they were going into that, was it, I mean, it was just discovered that there's asbestos.
Well,
Well, we knew there was asbestos.
Right, right.
I mean, the school never removed asbestos. They would paint over it, plaster over it. As long as it doesn't become airborne, and generally, it doesn't have a problem, you seal it. But the only problem I had with that, and I'm sure Mr. Finkley may haven't worked with asbestos in the past, it took us fifty years to find out that it was a health issue. And we say now, it may take us another fifty years to find out that just being in location may be a hazard. So we don't know. So the best thing, if we can, is to have it removed. Simple. It's easy to do. It's very costly. It's always been very costly, simply because you got to dress out in air masks and air suits and, and, this particular job is going to take about sixty days, sixty to sixty-five days, to remove all the asbestos in the old C.B. Bank. And we're happy that Mr., that Senator Hutto is, you know, thinking he may be able to help. And of course, I will solicit SCA, Mr. Black. We need to talk about some things. And that has been kind of lingering here on this project, so. But I certainly feel very strongly that the Senator can help. So in the bid process, you know, I would recommend that we hold off on looking at the bids until we get further information. And Senator Hutto has agreed to meet with our developer to kind of get a better understanding on how we move forward. So, and I think Council hopefully will approve this. We'll just slow down on where we are. We just spent a hundred thousand dollars on architectural fees. And I think we had a good point, that we can take a pause and, excuse me, and get with the Senator and see how we move forward, so.
Okay. And one other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that a couple of weeks ago, I, I spoke with a gentleman at Countess Nursery in Barnwell about the landscaping, landscapes and buildings in, in Allenhead County, county buildings. But after speaking to Mr. Killian, he said that I can't do it that way. We have to put it out. We have to bid it, bid for other companies to put a bid for the job. But I asked Mr. Connor about the courthouse, the brand building, the admin building, the voter registration office, and the leisure center, the leisure center. I think it was fine buildings. And what I would like for the bid to include, Billy, is the, a, a plan for planning shrubbery, drawing a plan for the county to purchase shrubbery based on the plan. And also for planning the shrubbery, and I guess taking care of it too, I guess. But I would like to bid, could we do that, Mr. Chairman? Send a, Mr. Bid, send a bid out for that.
I think we need to ask, draw up a specs of what we want, and, and then send it out. Or have somebody come in and do, uh,
On skid row, just have it?
Well, let's do a recommendation, have somebody come in and say, "Hey, guys, this is what you need. This is what fits in this area. Do a design, give us a preliminary design, and then we can go out for bid." But that would be the best.
Will they back up a minute? Say that again?
We need to have somebody can come in and take a look at our facility and rec, and do a recommendation as to what we need.
Well, that's what I wanted to bid to include, the, the design, to the plan, the plan for the landscaping.
Well, we can actually go out for a landscape engineer to come in.
Isn't that right, Mr. Killian?
You would actually, it'd be a two-step process, really. You need to get somebody to come in and design what you're going to bid. So you'll have to bid the design and then bid that out to actually do the work. But there's also, I mean, one option maybe, do we have any local garden clubs? That anybody knows about?
Having a what?
Local garden clubs.
Oftentimes, they will do public spaces on behalf of the community without you having to go through all that process.
Ms. Ann Rice do a lot with gardening. I don't know if she have a club or not, but she's very, um,
I would say Ann would probably be the person I would go to first, and she could recommend. There may be some clubs here. I know we used to have a few garden clubs here in the community, and I hadn't seen them active. I know my wife and Ann work on a few projects here in town, and I'm sure there's others.
That's Ann Ammar, my question.
All right. Ms. Jennings, thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman, Mr. Chairman and Council. Our report is going to be brief as well. I just want to let everyone know, you know, we're not in agreement with CCNI, not only to do our inspections, but also handling our permitting. And I just wanted to provide an update that, that has been a relatively smooth transition. They had to make some adjustments to their database, but they've been working very well with our assistant administrator, Mr. William Robinson, to, to make sure that permits are handed out and taken care of properly. So that's going well.
Okay.
Um, from the personnel side, Personnel Committee, Ms. Jennings and I have met several times, it seems, since, since our last meeting, and will be bringing some information during executive session regarding hires. Also, last thing I want to add, I'm going to bring out, I know, Mr. Finkley, the last time you were here, you brought up some information about the E-nine-one-one system. And I, I just want to report on this, because I kind of engaged you with that. I was looking up that state statute. It's twenty-three, forty-seven, sixty, which is what I actually thought it was the last time. And you mentioned the gentleman, Mr. David Morrison, from SC Wireless, and he provided us with some information. Now, Mr. William Robinson reached out to him, and Mr. Morrison gave feedback from his email to me. I just want to leave this for the information. It says, "From reading the law outline in SC twenty-three, forty-seven, sixty, my interpretation is that if and only a Allendale County approved that the one-hundred-dollar fee is necessary in the establishment and maintenance for addressing for its nine-one-one caller system, then this charge can be considered lawful. There are seemingly no dollar amounts specified in the law regarding new address processing fees, but it does say addressing costs are limited solely to establishing and maintaining a dressing for a nine-one-one system. This leads me to believe that any additional cost, perhaps used to generate revenue, for example, would be unlawful, because they exceed the limitation set forth by this section. Allenhead's one-hundred-dollar charge has to be justified by actual costs relating to nine-one-one services." And, you know, after speaking to
It's too many pages.
Mr. William Robinson, obviously, there are a lot of technological needs in our E-nine-one-one system, as long as we're not using that one-hundred-dollar fee to, to generate interest or, or invest it for any profit-making and it's being used solely to E-nine-one-one, that, from that interpretation, it is lawful.
Mr. White, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
The fee that you receive each month for the cell phones and the, the landlines, what do you do with that money? The fee that you receive each month from the telephone system, from every phone in the county out of there, landline and cell phone, what do you do with that fee?
I think that fee is restricted, that goes back into the system.
And it's supposed to do it to the nine-one-one address? That's the money?
It goes back into the system.
You do the taxes.
James, it goes back into the system. But I think the point here, that Mr. White was trying to make it all of that.
I understand what you're saying. But what I don't understand, what are you doing with that money? If you come in and you're not giving me a refund for that, what are you doing with it?
I think Ms. Major's already made that case for you, so we, we hopefully will have that to show you. Give us a few more minutes.
I didn't, I didn't get it. I only made that paper up about a year ago, nine months ago, and you didn't do the resolution, and you didn't do the ordinance. So really, by law, you don't have to keep minutes for so long. So it really no good, because you're not caught.
Well, I think one of the things we pride ourselves up here is keeping records as long as we have to. Passed them.
I'm going to work with you, Mr. White.
Okay. Just work with us.
I'm just addressing the new calendar. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's my report.
Okay. Very good report. Just want to move quickly. I don't have a whole lot to say, but we will be having a meeting with the town of Allendale. This is concerning the old facility, what we call the SC-one-twenty-five buildings, that, that as you enter or exit the town, the commercial side, the buildings are dilapidated. So they were working with a developer coming in on twenty-fourth, which is next week, to sit down and talk about. and talk about doing some redevelopment, which is a good thing. I've always thought when we had the EPA assessment grant, we could have, and based on our findings, it was the prime time to go ahead and bring a developer in to, to, since that study was fresh. Now, we probably would have to go back with asbestos and some of the other foundation problems and do that, do all that again, or update as much as we can. So, it looks like the town is moving in the right direction. Also, I don't know if Mr. Black going to be with us on the 25th when we sit down with the SRS COO lunching with the SRS Labrador Director. That's going to be, I think, on Thursday. So, and he's new director coming in, and we're going to hopefully get a chance to find some things out. Next month, there's a couple of things happening next month. SRP credit union will have on the 23rd at the brand building. They will be given a literacy, a financial literacy program. It's going to start about four, five, last couple hours for the entire community. And then on the 24th, also here in this council chamber, excuse me, and Ms. Judy, just make a note, on the 24th of July, we're going to be here at 11 o'clock with the SE Nexus to talk about workforce development, and lunch will be provided, and that's probably going to last a couple hours. Also, on tomorrow and Saturday, we're going to be having a retreat, excuse me, with the Town of Allenell, first time ever. We're going to sit down and go out of town. We're going to stay within the SCA region in Waterboro and sit down and talk about our differences and our similarities and see if we can work better together. We're going to do a half a day tomorrow and then finish up a half a day on Saturday. So, we hope we will have some new initiatives. One of the things I'm looking for is we can actually form some committees on some issues that we can move forward to work on. So, that's certainly be a first. I know we in negotiation with Law enforcement. We don't want to spend a whole lot of time because this committee, along with the sheriff, has been working pretty hard, but we will give, if the Public Safety Committee want to spend a little time on it, we'll do that. And lastly, last month, we talked about, Mr. Hall had, had given us a bid on some commercial law mowers and at the cost of $29,000. And I'm going to recommend to council that we, we, we go ahead and prove that request. Thanks to Barnwell County, we have received some feed and loo funds that has come in and very timely, and I think we're going to be in position to do that. So, if I could get some, one of my councilmen to give me a motion on that, I'd like to move that forward.
How many commercial law mowers?
Two, we need two. And the bid was $29,000, if I remember correctly. And Mr. Hall can provide the sheets for us. He did last month, and we didn't, we didn't get two.
I make motion that be approved, purchase of two commercial law mowers for $29,000.
Sir. Moving properly, second, any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's my report. I'm hoping I got the right agenda here. We down to item 10, and just want to take a look at A, B, and C. And that was our bids for the coat room and, a coat house, excuse me, the voter registration and all sort of library, A, B, C. And what I'm asking council to do, and I will give Mr. Killian, we will write a letter. We do have approximately nearly $400,000 left in the SC Commerce Fund, Consolidation Fund, that we will ask our legislators to see if we can use those fund, remaining fund. And it's only going to take about half to do these three group and see if we can get permission to divert those funded to those particular items, the coat house, the library, and our voter registration. If that's okay with council, that's my recommendation. Down to item D, we have the Freedom of Information Act request form. This is something that we need to go ahead and update, and I think we all have it in our package. And the updates, Judy, you want to tell us the items that need to be updated on that?
The amount per page.
Okay.
It is currently $25 per page.
Okay.
It was suggested it go to a dollar per page.
Okay.
And it says that contact, that contact person would be the administrative officer and council has selected that I be the contact person, clerk to council.
Sure. So that's two of the changes, $1 per page, and the contact person on our website will be our clerk to council, Ms. Judy Connor. Council, any other requests or changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the, the administrator to take a look at it and give us his thoughts before we proceed.
All right, we move on. We down to new business, Project Magnolia Feed and Loow. This will be the first reading in name only, and I'm asking council to give me permission to, to sign the agreement.
Move back, Mr. Foreman, a motion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion that we accept the feed and loo agreement for, to have the county's project Magnolia in name only, and give you the authority to sign on behalf of the council.
Sir. Moving properly, second, any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Also, we have a waiver. And that waiver, because, Walter, you want to?
Well, you should probably discuss that in executive session.
You think so?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We go to item B, resolution authorizing the continuance of the Allenell County 2425 budget for such a time as the FY 2526 budget can be finalized.
So, move.
Moving properly, second, this CR for the 2425 budget. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Aye, aye. Item C, first reading of the FY 2526 budget in name only. Get a motion.
So, move.
Moving properly, second, the 2526 budget in name only. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Aye, aye. Down to item D, I'm recommending that we put on hold, working on, put on hold consideration of these, these particular bids on the CB Bank project until further notice.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any updates on when we'll ever see some figures on what this thing is going to actually cost and what the financial responsibility the county will be?
And that's the same question we got from Senator Hutto. And if you remember, several months ago, when Mr. Downing did his presentation here, we did have a figure, and we did have sources of income of where the money would come from. But nothing has been finalized as, we don't know exactly how much Clemson going to put in, there's some variables that we don't know right now, and that's why we want to hold off simply because the school has not decided when they're going to turn the facility over to us. So there's some, there's some things that we are not certain of, and that's the reason why I don't want to recommend spending a half a million dollars, and we don't know where we are. But we did have a conversation with Mr. Downing, and Mr. Black, he's waiting to hear from you also. And, but we need to take a pause and meet with our Senator and hopefully get things in gear again. And SC Department of Education is, is kind of slow, slow to respond. They were very active six months ago, now we, we're not getting a whole lot of traction from them. So, we, we, we think there's some things that has occurred that we may not be aware of, and we need to just cover all the tracks to see where we are. Walter, you want to talk about the resolution for feed and loo for the Department of Energy? It's pretty normal, looks like the normal thing we've been signing.
It's the exact same thing that we've been doing.
Okay.
For years and years, and the, the figure is the same as last year. And what this resolution does is offer out to choose a sign, the end of government agreement, and this is for 2024.
Okay.
But it's the same one that y'all been doing.
Okay. So no increase in funding, huh?
Not yet. But we're working on that, you know, we talked about that the last meeting.
Is everybody engaged, Tri-counties are engaged?
I have had conversations with my counterparts on both Barnwell and in Aitken. We went through the process of doing the appraisal a few years ago. It does not guarantee success, but they make you do the appraisal process. Barnwell is the lead, wasn't the lead then, they're talking about being the lead in this year. What happens is you go through an extensive appraisal that says this is what the property looked like in 1950, and this is what it would have been worth when we did that in 2017. And we got prior, specifically got prior approval from the Department of Energy to do buildings, land, and timber. I sent an email from legal counsel from DOE that says, "Proceed, you can use us." But we proceeded with the appraisal. Coming out of Barnwell, did the appraisal, did a very job on the appraisal, we sent it to the Department of Energy, and they said, "No, we told you couldn't do timber." So they took the whole thing out, baby, the backwater, and we didn't get an increased tenure. But it's, it's, there's a new landlord in NSA, there's a landlord out there now at NIA, and we think there's, it's worth running up the platform and see what happens. So that's what, we're just in the process of getting started with that.
But as you recall, when they did that last, Allenell County pulled out of it because of the cost.
Yes.
So we weren't involved.
It's not cheap, right?
I know, I know.
But it shouldn't be, I'm guessing it shouldn't be difficult this time because of the work that you did the last time, the property that you might need to build.
So.
That was, that's quite true.
And the last figure we got, they've cut about $2 billion worth of timber off that property.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, that is as far as certain set up nice arrangement.
Can I get a motion?
I'm going to.
Sir.
Okay, so moving properly, second, that I will be signed E for the resolution for feed and loo for the Department of Energy. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Aye, aye. Council, any other concerns?
Make a motion, go into the.
We're here from, we're here from, Mr. Killian? You want?
Doesn't run out.
Doesn't run out?
I've, I've been here three weeks, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to, to you dig in and see where we are.
Okay.
I appreciate council's, you know, being the chance to do this, and I'll do my best for real progress.
Okay. Miss Attendants?
Well, sorry y'all are taking us off, off the doors and I'm not agenda, so.
I wasn't where I was supposed to make a report.
But the only thing I have is the Boogaloo Crossing, William and I have met with them, we had a Zoom meeting on the 16th, 13th of June, and we're having another Zoom meeting on the 27th. The lady we have involved now with the county is really, is pushing it. So, I think we're making progress now, you know? We've, we've got all the programs we need from DOT, now we're still working with CSF.
Okay, very good.
And other thing I have is executive.
Okay, and we'll make certain that we have you on the agenda for next month, okay? Okay, a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Okay, and we're going to take a five-minute pause before we go in.
Back into session. Council, any action need to be taken?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to give a conflict waiver to Haynesworth, St. Clair and Boyd and Gary Morris for a legal matter representing Aldeve County concerning Project Magnolia.
Okay, we've heard the motion.
Aye.
Okay, moving properly second that we have a conflict waiver for Haynesworth Attorney Gary Morris to represent us on Project Magnolia. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses by the same side, aye. Aye, sir. Any other business?
Much more than we're done.
Okay. We have our sheriff here. You want to say anything to this sheriff? I'm glad that you're here with us. I appreciate you being here.
No problem.
Okay. But you don't want to say anything but...
I just, I appreciate everybody's cooperation as far as this agreement with Matthew and Mr. Chang, trying to work with this city, trying to do the best I can, just holding the hour down. I know that the county's catching the wind, but doing what I can do with what I got.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing.
And I got four employees that, two of them, three of them are certified that's supposed to be coming aboard.
You going to be fully staffed?
I'll be fully staffed for 20 days.
Okay, sounds great. Appreciate all you do. I know you don't hear it enough, but we appreciate it.
And hopefully they'll be contacting William in the next three weeks. I put him for a grant. They moved their alternative school down to Fairfax and I filled out for a grant position for the SRO for the alternative school.
They're moving it from Fairfax back here?
They're moving it from Bryan High School to Fairfax Elementary School.
They opened up this school.
They got over 100 enrolled in the alternative school, so I had to put SRO that thing.
Well, the last time I took my neighbor down there was in Fairfax. That's why I'm asking. This is about three years ago.
Well, they combined and they shut down the Boyd's and Girls Club where they were doing the adult ed and stuff. Now they're going to do everything at Fairfax.
You said they have over 100 enrolled in alternative? And that's from K through 12.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks for sharing that with us. We adjourn.